Is the flag over?
Yes.
We pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible-
With liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there any agenda edits? I'm sorry? Oh, right, roll call. It's been awhile.
Mr. Sumner.
Take it, Brian.
Here. Mrs. Hamel. Mr. Kurts. Here. Mr. McCullough here. Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Shaheen.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
And Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, thanks. Alright, so we have a couple of agenda edits. Uh, let's see what they are here. Number 9A1G, Jordan Jacoby Point Five, social studies teacher, high school resignation effective 81012. 9C1S, Courtney Newcomer, LTS, half social studies teacher, high school, at $44,496, full year effective August 14th, 2012, replaces J. Jacoby. 9D3B, Karen Brown's new hourly rate should be 1719, not 1688. She should have been given credit for 16 years instead of only 15. 9D3C, Angelique Detwiler, entry should be removed. Angelique is staying in her three-hour position at the high school. 9D3E, Kimberly Kunz, replaces P. Mikowski, not D. McCleary. 9D3G, Deanna McCleary, entry should be removed. Deanna is staying in her four-hour position at MEC. 9D3J, Donna Roazario, entry should be removed. Donna is staying in her three-hour position at the high school. And, um, I believe that's it. That's it.
Um, it looks like the typo with one, uh, D1A, this is Director of Board Administrator.
Oh, yes, we'll make that point. Just wanted to let the board know that those changes were all very last minute. And to apologize for those edits that we needed.
Oh, did you get that?
Yeah, yes, I did.
D1A.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, we're gonna be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel issues. Are there any other, um, agenda edits or announcements that need to be made?
Announced on July 10th.
Oh, right. We had an executive session last month after the meeting to discuss personnel issues as well.
It was on July 10th.
Uh, July 10th was the date. Uh, any other announcements? Okay, moving on.
I'd like to actually add a B. I'd like to start off the meeting on a positive note, note that it's not gonna stay that way. We received word today through the Exelon Corporation, which is where Mr. McLaughlin is an employee, that we have been recipients of a $250 donation for time that Mr. McLaughlin put in, and I'm gonna turn it over to him and let him explain it, and congratulate him for that, for the district.
That's something that many bigger companies do, is, uh, they will, like, give, you know, a monetary donation for time spent out in the community. So, I had to log 25 hours of time in the community, which, um, it took 25 hours so far this year. And then, you know, what they do is, uh, they actually had to add that and donate to their directory to contribute to, but, uh, on Friday, Dr. Otto received the $250. So, you make, um, you know, that was one of those emails I used to not, you know, I didn't do a lot with at one time, when it was about logging out and things of that nature, but, uh, it's certainly an opportunity for your companies to go ahead and donate to the school district. So, uh, $250, I'm happy to, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, and thank, um, thank your corporation as well, for that, um, it's not a lot, but every little bit helps.
Okay, um, moving on, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Alright, uh, one of the, um, big op topics this year was the administrative reorganization. So, I'd like to just read kind of a prepared statement. Back in June of this year, Mrs. Trainer, the assistant to the superintendent, announced her retirement, and we reorganized the elementary administrative team by appointing Mrs. Torshia to fill Mrs. Trainer's position. In addition, we reassigned Mrs. Missaro to take over both AIC and APC as principal, and then appointed Mrs. Long to become the 11-month assistant elementary principal. With Mrs. Trainer's retirement, I also felt we had an excellent opportunity to reorganize the secondary administration and central administration to provide better oversight and more effective implementation of programming and initiatives that I believe need more direct oversight, and will ultimately have a positive impact on overall student performance. As part of this secondary reorganization, which is new, you had all been aware publicly of the first part of this, I have moved Mr. McComall to the central office, excuse me, to a new position called the Director of Administrative Services. He will be directly involved in the policy review process that we have started, oversight for our diversity initiatives, oversight for pupil services issues, which include coordination of K-12 guidance, school health services, and safe schools initiatives, and other administrative tasks as outlined in the job description, which we will also be bringing forward for approval. Many of these tasks in the past were divided up and added to the administrative responsibilities for building-level principals, quite frankly, where they don't belong. This position will remove some of those responsibilities from the building level so our principals can concentrate more on running their building and focusing more on student achievement and learning. To fill Mr. McComall's position as the high school principal, I have shuffled a few secondary principals to different positions. Mr. Henkel is now our high school principal, Mr. Hurley is now middle school principal, Mr. Repco is now Mr. Hurley's assistant principal at the middle school. To fill Mr. Repco's assistant principal position at the high school, we took one of the high school 12-month assistant principal positions and realigned it to become a 10-month position, and we have appointed former middle school teacher, Mrs. Jenny Rexrode, to fill that position. This administrative reorganization also created a domino effect that allowed us to recall three furloughed teachers, and they have been, some of them have already been called back, one of them is on the agenda tonight. The net effect of all these moves is that I believe we will have a more effective administrative structure, and we will actually realize a cost savings of a little over $20,000 in the process. Um, I know a lot of people have been asking questions, at least a few people anyway. I have created a one-page summary spreadsheet, the board members have already seen that, I plan to post that on our website so our residents fully understand the new positions and can see the financial impact of these changes as well. Frankly, I feel very fortunate that we are able to make this smooth transition from the many years of Mrs. Trainer's experience to our new plan, and to do so all while saving the district an additional $20,000. So, that's a summary, pending the board's obvious ratification, I wanna say obvious ratification tonight of the plan, I will then, um, have our technology department post for the public on the website, the spreadsheet that I provided you with that outlines everything and all the changes.
Okay, any questions from the board on this?
I don't have a question, as much as I'd like to thank Dr. Otto for taking time to explain this at the meeting, I received correspondence from a few constituents, and I, I believe their questions have been answered by your explanation.
Thank you.
If there's any questions, they can go free to refer to the microphone and ask them. So, thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from board members? We did spend some time at the finance committee meeting in July reviewing this, and we also reviewed an overall organizational chart outlining the structure of the, of the school district, and I believe you said you guys might also be putting that up on the website at some point in the future as well.
Yeah, that I would like to actually do as part of many school districts' posts for the benefit of the public, kind of a flow chart, which shows who answers to who. It goes all the way from the taxpayer, down to the board, down to the administration, and then all the way, I hate to say "down," but that's just the way it flows, uh, down to the teacher level. Um, so, we're in the process of working on that now, and I would just like to, as a, as a practice, post that on our website, so the public, Exeter School District actually has one that I saw. And, um, I think it would be, many districts do it, we just haven't. So, yes, we will, um, be working on that very soon.
Okay. Alright, um, you wanna continue with-
Yes, preparation for the 12-13 school year. Today marks the official beginning for practices for all high school fall athletic activities. Building principals also are busy with last-minute preparations for students. Um, if you have children out there and they're counting the days, um, it's two weeks plus one day. Teachers have started, and by the way, Student School does open for students on August 28th. Teachers have started to report to work to serve their one day of flex time before they officially report for their first full day on August 27th. Sometime in the last week, as I usually do, before school starts, I will put out a Connect Ed call saying, "Hello, here we are, it's time to come back to school." So, um, that's kinda where we are in the preparations for the next school year.
Okay, uh, moving on to school-
I added on, um, this summer, the PDE was busy as part of the passage of the state budget. Governor Corbett actually signed into law a few changes to the school code. There are others, if you're interested, you can go to the PDE website, I thought I'd highlight a few. Some of the key changes include an expansion of the qualifications for superintendents to include allowing individuals with a graduate degree in management, and also individuals with a Juris Doctorate and four years of relevant experience, who can, who would now be eligible to enter, to be interviewed and serve in the position. Uh, PDE is also, as part of the, um, passage of the school budget and the school code, created a new rating tool for classroom teachers that becomes effective in 2013-14, and subsequently, a new rating tool for principals starting in 2014-15. There's also a new provision in the school code, which we should be listening very closely to, which allows employee furloughs without PDE approval. So, districts simply must modify, must, excuse me, notify PDE of the change. Now, if you remember, that lengthy process that we used to go through for curtailments, that now is at the board's discretion, and, and you just have to, you still have to follow the same pattern, but there's only a one-step process now. So, there are many other changes in the school code, but I wanted to make you aware of those. So, that's what I have on that. And finally, the summer school report, um, the report, I just wanted to show you that we netted, um, with all of the, uh, summer school activities. Mrs. Trainer put this chart together for me. Um, when you net everything out, we saw approximately $67-6800 of, to the good in that process. Just for the public's benefit, uh, that includes high school remedial courses, middle school remedial courses, middle and elementary, uh, summer band camp, and also a theater camp that ran at AIC. Does Mrs. Trainer have anything to add to that? So, that's that report, and that concludes my report under superintendent's report.
Okay, any board members have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to curriculum and instruction.
Okay, not much to report here. Uh, the committee has not met since, I believe, May was our last meeting. Mr. Shaheen?
Yes, and I wanted to bring, um, bring that up. Our meeting is, was scheduled for the first Thursday in September, but I have a conflict with that date.
So, we're gonna move to October?
Um, either October, we could move it to later on in the month, I mean, it's-
No, we have time.
It's up to the other board members, we can discuss it with Mr. Kurts, he'll probably call again, but the other board members will maybe the following week if we can do that. But, uh, we'll find out with him, post the date, but I think we need to get back going to AP scores, and we'll probably even discuss those, class loadings, and a few other things.
Again, just to remind the public, um, one of the things, and what we say on the agenda setting the schedule for the year, the regularly scheduled meetings for curriculum and instruction are the first Thursday of the month. So, as you begin to plan, um, sometimes we do have a meeting pending, uh, the material that we have, but they, they are standing meetings, and if we don't need them, we certainly would announce that they are not going to be held.
Any other board comments on that? Okay, any, uh, public comments? Okay, uh, moving on to buildings and grounds.
Just a general district-wide update, uh, our facilities crews in each building and across the district have worked diligently to prepare our buildings and grounds for the opening of school. Uh, obviously, the administrative reorganization involved many moves, and I wanna give kudos to Mr. Smith and his crew for having done a great job of coordinating all of the logistics. Uh, as we speak, Mr. Smith is over at BEC, monitoring the firing up, kind of a contradiction in terms there, make it cool, but the firing up of the chillers, and, um, he said he'd give me a, kind of an update at some point this evening, uh, but they are now fully installed and being tested for the first time today. Herdsboro staff is very happy to hear that, I'm sure. And, uh, regarding the schedule of the 2012 school year, um, for our standing committee meetings for facilities, they are held the first Monday of every month, but I believe we're deferring our September meeting and meeting Monday, October 1st, as our first facilities meeting. Just as a note, um, for the public that is here, I see familiar faces, all of the meetings will be scheduled here this year in terms of these public board meetings. As of now, committee meetings are still back at Matthew Brook, so, um, just keep your ears and eyes open for that as we post those meetings, but all of the other meetings will be here. That concludes my report under facilities.
Any questions from board members on facilities? Okay, um, any public comment? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to finance.
Items A, B, and C are routine, we will obviously add course approvals as they come through. Item D is your annual, uh, review of the retainer, which I copied everyone on, the retainer has no changes in it, uh, so I don't feel like I really need to make further comment on that. Um, I would certainly, uh, recommend your approval, as I believe Fox Rothschild and Mr. Subers give us excellent service.
Just a note, is that correct, they've had no fee increase since 2006?
That's what he represented in the letter.
I thought there was a slight increase.
There was a slight increase, but was it that long ago?
No, it wasn't that long ago, 'cause we-
There was one-
Yeah, I thought there was a slight in-
There was a slight increase.
I don't remember one since I've been with-
Uh, it wasn't this-
Was it in the retainer or wasn't in the billable hours?
Excuse me, it wasn't in the retainer, it's for the excess work.
Yeah, the billable hours.
The billable hours, that went up.
Well, the retainer didn't.
Right.
I don't know how much an hour, but-
I can't-
Retainer belief stayed the same.
Right.
And that's where the majority is.
That sounds about right, the retainer, I believe, it's the hourly additional stuff.
Yeah, because that came up two years ago.
Correct, correct, correct.
Alright, moving on, item E, uh, we need to approve going out to bid for the food service management company for 2013-14. Um, this need, um, has been moved up due to the federal regulations under the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. Um, I really don't have much more to add on that item.
Do we actually write a bid spec for that?
It's actually state, there's a state template that we are to use.
Okay.
Item F? We okay? Item F, approved contracting the services of Conrad Siegel actuaries, um, total cost of $6,300. This item has been reviewed and brought forward as a recommendation from the finance committee to provide our actuarial evaluation for our, uh, benefits, uh, plan for employees. Mrs. Penz, anything else to add to that?
Nope.
The next item is, just simply, PDE has sent us two letters asking for, um, acknowledgement of Plan Con J from the middle school project, those are your attachments five and six, board members. That's the project accounting based on final costs, it's, this is really simply a perfunctory move, it's required by PDE for us to enter this action into our minutes. And Danielle, I don't know if you need to add any more to that?
I can.
Please do.
Um, as I had explained to the board back in March when they authorized us to be able to submit this for approval, these, um, documents actually are now setting our permanent reimbursable percentage on these particular leases, which is money that we actually get back from the state. With looking at everything we paid at the old rates and at the new rates, it looks like we're actually gonna wind up owing PDE about $4,800. I don't have the exact figures from them at this point, but from the documentation that I was able to pull, um, on two of these leases, our rates, uh, actually did go down. So, two of them, they went up, but the ones that went down, went down more, so, we're actually probably gonna wind up owing them a little bit of money.
How are the rates determined?
Through this process that they, they have a whole process that they do. Once they take all of our information-
It's kinda like an algorithm, they just use a formula.
Yeah, they take all of our information in that we send in, um, on all those forms, and then they plug it into their system, and then they come out with what the, uh, final permanent percentage is.
Anybody else have any questions on that issue? Okay.
Uh, the report from the finance committee and the budget reopening question, I think go hand in hand, Mr. Basil, would you like to have us, or would you like to go through the-
I'm, I'm happy to report it out.
Okay.
We talked about a couple of different things, um, in the finance committee, we talked about the financial impact of the administrative reorganization, which Dr. Otto highlighted earlier. Um, we also talked about, um, updating the 2013, or the 12-13 budget, uh, that we recently, as a board, went over, and then there were subsequent changes after we voted on the budget, uh, both in terms of, uh, additional revenue that came in from the state, uh, finalizing some of the numbers that, um, in terms of insurance, um, I think it was the, uh, data security insurance, uh, cost, and a few other minor items that were plugged in there. Um, reviewed those, we put them all on the budget worksheet that we were all operating with, you all should have received a copy of that, um, after that meeting, so you had a chance to take a chan, uh, to review that budget worksheet, see where the changes were, I believe they're highlighted in purple. And, um, as part of that discussion, we talked about reopening the budget, um, and modifying our, the budget that we submitted in June to reflect these changes in the, in the overall budget that, um, uh, due to the state providing more financing. And, uh, the board was, or I'm sorry, the finance committee was kinda split on whether to move forward with that or not, so, we decided we'd bring it here to the board, and we could have a discussion about it here.
Why would you do it?
Why? Um, I think my position on it is, why wouldn't you do it? Um, the cost to do so has already been, you know, in terms of consulting with our attorney and everything else, it's already been incurred, it's a sunk cost, and at this point, why wouldn't we want the best, um, most accurate budget to report off of as possible?
That's what it is, just to make all the numbers, this is what actually was keeping up, when we voted on this package, we didn't have everything, so that's all that's just, okay.
What precipitated it was the late approval of the Accountability Block grant money.
No, I, I, I understand that part, my, my question is, how far into the future are we gonna be able to data to put into that? Um, because the administrative changes, you're not gonna put that in there, because that happened after we voted on the budget, so that $20,000 savings was incurred in this school year, wasn't, or will be incurred this school year, wasn't something that we did or voted on prior to the 30th, so I'd be against putting that in there. But as far as putting the fresh numbers in or anything that we thought of, or, I mean, if the school, uh, the bussing, if we didn't know the good numbers, there's Accountability Grant, or the state gives $150,000 more, I got no problems opening up and putting that number, but going into the future, um, I think it's kind of a- And it's, it's funny money at that point, I'm not sure you, 'cause how, when do you stop?
Understand one thing, though, if you're, you have limitations to what you're allowed to do.
Right.
You can't just say, "Oh, we have a chance to open up the budget, let's fix all the things that we can, we see after the fact that we can fix." There's a very finite list of what PDE will allow us to put in there, so you're still not perfect.
Right, I don't understand that, but what is-
You're just trying to get into things that PDE has, has acknowledged that is okay for us.
But we still, are we still gonna be working off two separate sheets coming-
We will, yeah.
Then, then why go through that effort at all, there's still gonna be two separate sheets?
That was, kinda the conversation we had for about an hour and a half.
Exactly, and as Mr. Basil said, the committee-
I just played devil's advocate, why?
And as Mr. Basil alluded to, the committee was split, and, again, I'm not opposed to doing it if it was a huge sum of money, but with all the changes, it ends up being a net of $60,000 or something like that.
64, I think.
64,000, so again, to me, it's, it's, it's a lot of time and effort, and, and there is somewhat, I guess, gray area, you wanna call it, as they're like, the reorganization to put in there, that if we all know those changes occurred, we'll, we know where we're gonna start with next year's budget. I mean, that's, that's why we split. I was, I was saying, I don't wanna see that.
The question then is, let's go back to the first, you asked to play with the numbers, use the numbers, what's Mrs. Penz's feeling on, on the whole process?
She knew you were gonna ask her that, we rehearsed, we rehearsed this today.
And we, we asked Dr. Otto for his recommendation, I mean, what's your recommendation? If you're the one that has to work two sheets, if you're the one that has to maintain, do these changes, and you could call it on the spot next year, would we say, "Where are the numbers, why are they different?"
Well, I wouldn't use two sheets. Um, the budget is gonna be what the budget is, so if you don't, if we don't reopen it, the budget is what was approved in June. Where I will put the numbers in is when you're asking me what fund balance is gonna be at the end of the year, when my internal sheets that I'm working off of, if I put my budget numbers in for revenue, for example, for Accountability Block, is gonna be zero, but I know there's $154,000, I put that in there, just like this past year. Accountability Block got approved after the budget was approved, and, I mean, I had that number in there. So, quite honestly, it doesn't matter to me, I can put the changes in and we can have them there, but like you said, there's still gonna be other things that have occurred. Um, right now, the admin changes are in there to be included with the Accountability changes. Um, other things that have come forward, if we have, for example, tonight, um, some resignations on here, those changes are not in there. You're always, it's, it's a fluid process.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's as accurate as it can be.
Just, just for splitting hairs purposes, part of the administrative reorganization took place in the last fiscal year, the other part of it's taking places, so that's really a gray number.
I'm more, I'm more, I mean, again, I'm always of the, you know, one and over dealing with, we always talk about what's the right number, we're voting on a bunch, we, God forbid you get hit by a beer truck, the person that takes over for you is gonna be looking at a spreadsheet with nothing in the Accountability Grant, and the sheet that has something, you wanna know where it's coming from.
Sure.
So, if it's easier for you to do it so that you're only, you're only working with one sheet, then, if you're the one that's gotta do it, you don't have a problem doing it to a point.
That's fine.
Until we get into what Mr. McCullough calls that gray area, uh, I'd be a little hesitant to play with gray areas, but anything that the state allows us to do, let's say that as of your meeting, update those numbers up, up to that point there.
I mean, I think that for the taxpayer, I'm sorry, for the taxpayers, I just think they need to, they don't see our internal documents, they only see what's published, and so, the ability that we can make that as accurate as possible, of course, it's just a budget, at the end of the day, things change, people retire, people, things change every day in terms of how you benchmark against your budget, but at least what we're reporting out there, what we're, we plan on doing is at least as accurate as possible, uh, for their, for their digestion and, um, um, and review.
How does the state handle this then, moving forward?
It's never-
Re-submit one budget?
I have to resubmit as if, just like the new process.
Do they delete that old budget that goes away?
I can't answer that question.
They are not making us do this, however.
Understand that.
I kinda, I wanna, whenever we decide to put in there, can we ask our council to make sure we're okay, to the best of its knowledge, 'cause as I understand, most schools have never even done this. So, again, I'm not opposed to what Mr. Basil's suggesting, my problem was, is there's that area, it's that gray area too, is, I don't wanna be with PDE with having two budgets out there when we started, and they start comparing, "Why did you do it?", you know what I mean? That's my concern, is that you have two floating around up there at a, at a, at a government agency that really doesn't work, excuse me, too fast.
I think I'm on the same page, you know, I'm indifferent, I'd like the idea-
So do I, but I'm afraid that it's gonna-
It's still not gonna be perfect, so-
Correct.
If, if my concern-
Correct.
Which it is, is to get the most accurate information-
Correct.
-to the public, then the, the best way I would do that is to say, "Here's our budget, and here's all the amendments we made after the budget," because even if we reopen the budget, there's still missing pieces.
Exactly, I agree with you.
And we're still not giving the public every update.
I agree with you.
I'd rather say, "Here's what was approved, and here's an amendment with all the changes, now that's it."
And I think that, I think, you're right, I think we present last year's, uh, this year's budget, here's the amended, here's where we're starting, here's our ground zero now, even though that's not what the state has, this is what we have, and I think that's a little easier, but again, I, I'm not trying to-
I agree with, I agree with Mr. McCullough, um, and, uh, Mr. Sumner, I think it might be more beneficial for the taxpayer to see the old budget, and it would be more clear if we give them a vengeance to look at, as either to, to look at the old budget, the new budget, and the old budget, I think would be better if it was more clear. But I am, I do agree with Mr. Basil, I think it's best that we give the taxpayers a budget formation, transparency. Yeah, again, yeah, I just, whatever, taxpayers, which is an important subset here, but it's also, the business office has to be able to work off of a common document, and if it means, if you can't put 100% of the changes in, except hearing the state won't allow us to do 100% of these, these things, then maybe working off of, here's the budget, here's our amendments, and running it that way may be a smarter way, instead of going halfway.
The easiest we can make it for the public to consume, I think, the better, the better we are.
My only concern was, um, if we had, we have the published document, and then you, we're print, we're publishing something else on our website too, so now you have two documents. I just don't want confusion being out there with the public as to which document they should be looking at, period. And I think we have a, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a law that requires us to provide them with a PDE document. There's nothing stopping us from providing a secondary document when they request it. But I just don't want there to be, I don't want to be adding confusion to the public discourse. This is, the whole purpose of reopening it was to add clarity. So, whatever we're doing going forward, that's the intent.
But I believe this clarity then is based what Harrisburg's final decision was for the budget. Correct. So, I mean, obviously, we're not changing anything directly.
And here's the thing, you have two weeks to think about it. I mean, we're not going to vote on it tonight, I don't believe, so...
Well, I do need to know, I have to publish in the newspaper 10 days before if the intent is to reopen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we really would like your consensus tonight as to whether we want to reopen or not.
And then, just a clarification for my purpose, if you wouldn't mind. If you go the amendment route, are you talking that every time there might be a personnel change on an agenda, you want an amendment to that budget? Or are you at a point in time stopping with last year's budget so that...
I think we're done with last year's budget now.
I think you stop as of July, June, July 1st or June 30th. I mean, that's the cutoff date.
The end of the fiscal year.
We have our budget, we go forward, there's always going to be changes.
So, the amendment, if we're talking about, are these few amendments we have here, would it be the admin route?
The things that were, that we did not have a solid number on when we were voting on the budget prior to having to do so, so...
Okay, so it was just accountability and the admin where you ordered everything else?
And can I ask, can we get a legal opinion prior to that voting meeting in two weeks? As to what we can and can't do, and since there is that maybe gray area as to do it, can we get a legal opinion?
We're going to give you possible directions.
Yeah, but I'm saying is, then if we do decide to...
Well, I mean, I have been in communication with Mr. Subers, but I don't have an official written legal opinion. And when I asked him about the admin changes, his response was, "I think you could be okay."
Okay, that's why...
I can share that email with you.
I'd like a legal written opinion, please.
He may say that in written as well.
Can I ask a question? What would be the downside of updating the budget in the new year? I mean, it's just maybe a different... Well, I think that one of the things we've added the fastest is multiple versions of a document out there that, we don't know which one's the latest, but one of the things that, what last year's employee asked for a date at the bottom of our budget workshop document. Because I'd be working off the ones that basically have another, you can call it that, but other, because for clarity sake, we'd say, "Well, which one do you have?" Because, you know, we'd have the one given date, but then we have the version that says a document out there on that one.
I think you shut it down. Typically, I mean, I don't know how a lot of people run their businesses, but my personal experience is, you work with the budget you have, unless something has fundamentally changed, that would require you to rethink the entire budget and therefore revise your budget. So, you know, it's a planning tool, right? At the end of the day, that's what it is, it's a planning tool. And if you've got a bad tool to plan with, then you might as well revise it. But if it's generally, you know, going to work for you, then that's the planning tool that you continue to use. That's been my experience.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, can we get a, just a show of hands? I'm getting the sense that we're okay with reopening it on these particular items as of June 30th to July 1st, but with the caveat that we just get a reaffirmation from Mr. Subers that all is well. Does that sum it up?
You said there's no costs associated with doing this, correct?
That's correct. I mean, unless we, we're asking for some sort of special written opinion from...
And then the advertising cost, and then there's obviously FedEx costs, and I have the FedEx, I mean, it's minimal.
I would go to the assumption we're going to open, change it, and have two weeks to think about it.
But again, we don't have to, whoever's got to get it posted.
Yeah, and yet, if you know, if we decide not to, if we decide not to, at least it gives people room to think about it.
So, post it as is in this paper?
Yeah, go ahead and advertise it. All right. We also discussed in the Finance Committee, multi-year budgeting. There's third-party sources out there that we're going to take a look at that may provide us with a software package that'll allow us to do this with greater ease. We talked about capital reserve balances and how we might need to start thinking about how we're going to organize ourselves to start prioritizing and saving for capital expenditures as they come forward in the ensuing years. We talked about a budget calendar, and we've asked the business office to try to provide us with a rudimentary budget by November 1st, so we can start working on that a little bit earlier. What else was there? We have talked about some other business in terms of our business accounts and how money moves from one count to the next, and how we can facilitate that maybe a little bit faster to realize hopefully higher interest payments and things of that nature, so that certain dollars aren't sitting in counts and aren't earning us anything and accruing, that we can sweep those out on a daily basis into other accounts that are. So, those were some of the discussions that we had at that meeting. Did I leave anything out?
I think that's it.
You got it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone? All right. Any public comment?
Which one's a hair if you're going to drag us almost trying to cut this film? Back to the budget here, we're just speaking as a taxpayer. I don't think anybody would ask that you keep constantly updating the budget. The year budget is the 12-month projection. Your best estimate, your revenue coming in, your expenses coming in, and that's going to vary because of minus code line hours as the 12 months press. What we would like, speaking as the taxpayer and representative of the public, is knowing where we're starting from. So, if you have information that the state gave, we would like to see that be the starting point. Because everybody on the stage has said that next year's budget is going to be the problem, unfortunately. When you start working that, I'd like to know where you're starting from. Not saying we're starting from here, but we also just like to be able to figure, and I think that's fair to you and to everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, I think we agree with your sentiment. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none.
Okay, moving on to personnel. Just for the format of tonight's evening, we have kind of a unique circumstance here in that we will have many employees that will need approval because they will actually be starting before we meet again. The day we meet as a board, some people have already started, so that's why I've called for the special voting meeting tonight to approve some of the personnel, but I thought we could at least discuss them here at this point under the committee of the whole. So, you have under item A, just, I'm not going to read every name. Some of the names that you see there are a result of the reorganization, people moving out of positions to make room for others. I would like to mention, thank Julie Berkeley, who has tendered her resignation per retirement for her many years of service to the district.
What are our plans to replace?
When you guys start interviewing to do that?
I mean, are we going to replace the Assistant Districts?
Oh, yes, I would certainly recommend it at this point.
Again, that's a question. We've heard it in some respect, are you looking to replace her and continue for her replacement?
Yes, at this point. Moving on to classified, again, nothing to, again, pending the edits that we talked about. Also, some Approval B-1, some leads, as stated. Under appointments, just again, a small note about the postings here. What we've started to do, so you can kind of keep track of everything, I think we've done this on and off, but I have asked that we do it all the time, especially for the benefit of those who are following our agendas closely. For all positions posted here, we do provide you with the name of the person who was previously in the position. We do that to show that none of these positions are new. So, when you see that, that means that it was already an existing position and someone else is just taking it over. As far as the positions in this category labeled Support Mentor, these are stipends paid to people who are new to their position, or paid to people who help people that are new to their position in the district as part of PDE requirements to have an induction program for new staff. And that's, the rate is contractual.
I have a question about that, Dr. Otto.
Certainly.
What goes, like, let's say I was appointed a mentor for a new teacher, what would I do? What would be my job?
You sit with them and kind of, it's like an orientation, kind of like what I did with you as a new board member.
A monthly thing?
It's time based on, there are some specific things that...
Good term is...
There are some things that PDE requires that you do, and then there are things that are unique to the position. Mrs. Trainer kind of oversees that program head. Mrs. Torch will be taking that over as she comes into the job. But it's kind of tailored to the person, to as simple as, here's how you make copies, as to learning lesson plans, having meetings with the principal, it's very similar. I think an orientation program would be a good synonym for the word induction in this case. Mrs. Trainer, anything to add to that, or is that? I know she always adds a little, I'm play-by-play and she adds the color.
As Dr. Otto mentioned, it is a requirement in department bid, and it's also a requirement that the individual goes through before they're able to attain level two certification. And it really is keeping the new teacher maybe a month ahead for the entire year. So, it's a go-to person from helping grading, they're always tied to the same curriculum, unless it's impossible, then it would be tied to the same job description maybe across the district. So, it's a comfort level for the individual, but it's really the responsibility of the mentor. They attend meetings with a certain protocol they're requiring, and that first will help them through that. The difference, a couple of years ago, you're negotiating teamwork with the DDEA, and we looked at a separate category for those that Dr. Otto referred to as support mentor. And you'll see the stipend is much less, and it's really just action designated contact in a new building or in a new grade hall.
Okay, are the rates for that, I know that's contractual, but does PDE set that as well?
That was negotiated between...
That's a negotiable item. PDE has the mandate, and again, when you talk about unfunded mandates, you have to do it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So, that takes care of that whole section. If you have any questions, we can wait till I finish this section. Classified, all changes again, our replacement of current positions with the name of the former person in the position listed. And again, pending, obviously, there were some edits that were mentioned. Under extracurricular, some further approvals. They've all been vetted by personnel, and the correct salaries are there. Building volunteers always come before the board for approval, nothing under substitutes. Item D, our transfers. This section represents the second part of the administrative reorganization that I outlined for you under the superintendent's report. And again, I just want to mention, all of those are with no change in salary other than Mrs. Rexrode is in a new position, so we posted a salary there. Under professional, these are transfers that we sometimes make just programmatically to meet our needs in the district. Item D under here is one of the teachers that was affected by the recall. She was able to be recalled to full-time status as part of the domino effect of the administrative reorganization. Under classified, again, there was an edit there, there were some changes, and that represents, again, our preparing. And again, we're going to ask you to vote most of these this evening, as a lot of these people will be getting to have to provide service before we have our next chance to vote them in. We also have in your possession, new job descriptions for the Director of Administrative Services. That is there for your review. The job description for the Elementary Assistant Principal, that actually should have come back to you in June, but we overlooked that, so we want to include it here at this time. And also, the new job description for the 10-month High School Assistant Principal. It's very important to have updated job descriptions for all positions, and these represent updating for the positions as stated. And I believe that is the end of personnel. Okay, any comments from board members, questions? Okay, seeing none. Do I have any questions or comments from the public? All right, we'll move on to programs.
Under the monthly enrollment, our summer enrollment numbers are there. If you compare to last year at this time, and I would actually like you to take a look at this because this is significant in that, you remember last year, we talked about, at least we broached the subject of building closure. And I'm not sitting here tonight to say we're closing a building yet, but our numbers are starting to go down. And we produce a document for the board every year. The document in your possession shows at this time last year, and now some things can change. Mrs. Barr did say to me earlier, we do have some new enrollments that we didn't process yet, but there are not many that are going to vary this number too much at this point. But comparison apples to apples, last year at this time, we had an enrollment of 3868. This point this year, we're at 3721. If you do the math, that's 147 difference to negative. So, if you do a further analysis of the numbers, the primary, if you look at the, if you've taken out the sheet, the high school enrollment is 36 less, the middle school is identical, MEC is down 12, BEC is down 17, and the AMITI area combined is down a total of 82. So, when you add all those numbers up, that's a significant drop. So, we'll have to monitor that and keep that at the forefront of some of the things we may have to do moving forward with our planning for the future. If that continues to go down, we may be changing the tone of our conversation at some point.
Dr. Otto, do you know on top of your, I noticed we've discussed previously in meetings, do you know how many more students will have to go down before we, before closing building meetings?
Well, that's a tricky number in that you always want to, and we could, you know, probably dedicate some time to this either at a curriculum meeting or a facilities meeting, but to answer your question off the top of my head, it has a lot to do with how you may want to program in the future. Given that we may have more space, we may be on that cusp where we can't really close, but we can reorganize and do some different things with grade levels and moving students around the district. But that's a bigger conversation, and when your numbers go down and you have more space, you wind up with more flexibility in the way you can program.
I'm just looking for a sense of direction in the future when this does come up, and to know when to bring it up. Are we talking 500 kids, 600?
I would say, and I don't mind being quoted on this, I would say if we start to get to around 3,500, we're looking at a different kind of conversation.
Right now, if you're going to put down, if you're setting one building and there's five grades, on every three students per grade.
Right.
And what do you have to do to me, it's, you have to be down about 3,500 to say, be able to combine classes, say, between BEC and ODC, or close ADC or something, to actually be able to do something. Otherwise, you're not going to get the master to be able to do that.
It opens up some interesting thoughts at least and plans in terms of how we might reorganize our educational structure and how we deliver our program to kids.
So, for the record, we're at 3,868, that's 2011. We're at 3,721 now.
Mrs. Barr, how many did you say you actually have on your desk?
We have about a dozen or so.
Maybe, so take about 10 to 12 off of that, so it's still a significant gap.
All right. Dr. Otto, you recall we had a conversation once in the midst of budget discussions or whatever it was, that PDE has a calculation, an algorithm they come up with that basically puts a price on each student?
That's correct.
What is that?
Right now, I believe we are right around, is it $10,000, Danielle, per student, regular red, 9,000?
I don't know.
I mean, I can get that easily, it's a...
It's like 147 times 9,000 per, you can pretty much guess that's how much less we'll be getting.
Absolutely. You do not get the tuition, it's called, that's correct.
That many thousands of dollars of less money.
That's correct. Not to mention the, not to get into, to digress here, but the students that we're now having competition with that are attending cyber charter schools as well, so...
Now, that list, that's students in our building, is that because they're being moved to alternative education? Or is it just the enrollment overall?
No, just our enrollment's down. The kids that are in alternative ed are on our rolls.
They're in that...
They're in that number.
This includes kids who are not in the schools now?
That's our total enrollment. Students on record attending Daniel Boone School District.
Now, if I were to add up all the numbers here, would that equal the total? Or would the total be different because it includes those students?
It's just one number.
I think Mr. Kurtz, if you're in 10th grade and you're going to alternative, you're going to show off in the 10th grade in the high school number.
Let me say this, as you know from our discussions, many special needs students need special placement. They're in here.
How many elementary students would you say are included in these figures but do not go to the brick and mortar Daniel Boone schools?
I'd have to research that figure. We do actually keep an accurate accounting of, that's actually going to be one of Mr. McComill's new responsibilities, charting those students who are often those...
Is it less than 50, or is it around?
Let me say it this way, we're probably out about $800,000 of tuition with students. Because in Pennsylvania, the money follows a student now with this new law that's been in effect since 1997.
So, you're referring to special education students that are placed?
Any student, any, no, 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 no. No, no, no. Any student that we place and we're responsible for, we receive the reimbursement. However, for students who choose to opt out of Daniel Boone schools and choose to charter school, charter or cyber, we don't see a dime of that money.
But they're not reflected in this number?
No, they are not. They are not considered enrolled in Daniel Boone.
It's just the double counting, I guess, is where you're going, is that...
Because they're residents, excuse me, because they're residents of the district, they get to take the money from the state.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just trying to figure out what is, I want to know the real number of people who are in BEC, the real number of students who are in...
This is it.
Well, no, 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 no.
Less replacements, special education.
Less, you have to subtract out the kids that are placed.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, so we have the bodies that walk through the door and we do it.
Correct. We can show you that. There's another chart that we produced that shows what each teacher has on their caseload. That would be, that number would vary from what you see on this paper. Mrs. Trainer produces it. Well, we produce that report on a monthly basis as well. We actually have used that document during budget process to show you how many teachers, that's how we do our planning, how many teachers we need to do the math and divide the number of teachers by the number of students in each section.
I mean, overall enrollment's dropped from around a little over 4,000 now, down to 3,700 and change.
When I arrived at Daniel Boone, we were at 39, I don't think. We might have topped 4,000 at one point since 2008.
How many years ago was that?
I started in 2008.
Two, three years ago?
Three years ago. So, this could be a real discussion in the next few years.
It's a real discussion now, frankly.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, figure 100 students a year is sort of where we've been going. I think we're down now at like 2,000...
Yeah, frankly, we've probably lost...
2007 population. 2007 population where we were before.
We've probably lost a few students to the half-day kindergarten initiative.
Mrs. Trainer often mentions a bubble that's going through our system right now, and she'll be leaving soon, and I want to know, when will that bubble be passing again? When will that be out of here and the enrollment will?
The bubble, Mrs. Trainer?
I think it's entering the high school, is it not? The bubble, the population bubble is.
Yeah, that's where the high school is still.
Is entering the high school at this point, is it not?
No, it's the middle school.
Right, you see, the middle school number didn't go down.
It's about halfway through the middle school, because you look at your elementary enrollments now, you're at about 254. The middle school is somewhere around like 326-ish, so it's moving to where, I would say it's secondary now.
Okay, so it's out of the elementary schools?
Actually, I think we have a bimodal sort of distribution. So you have a big bubble and there's a, there's a mini bubble, correct? Uh, Mrs. Trainer? We have like a big bubble, population bubble, and then there's like a mini bubble, like a year or two behind it, is that correct?
Yes, and from fifth grade back, it has slowed down. Kindergarten is very low. So you're starting to see probably the economic effect from the last five years. So the enrollments are definitely lower.
Yeah, and we've been, if you notice in the past couple of years, during the budget, we've been taking and shifting classes and maybe looking at that next year where we get eliminated session by adding in a couple of kids to each one of the existing sessions in the lower grades.
If these numbers continue to drop, reorganization of our elementary program's going to be a reality.
Okay.
We may not be able to close building.
Well, I.
Nutrition and count blocks.
Right.
Okay, any other board comments on? Okay, go, I'm sorry, go on to.
We'll also asking, we'll be asking the board to accept the Accountability Block Grant for 154,447. Just a little narrative, the money in the ABG, as we call it, will be used to fund increased instructional tutoring time for our work with PSSAs, progress monitoring for foresight testing, grades three to eight, staff development for curriculum work to align with our PA Common Core standards, excuse me, staff training for educational and other initiatives, and supplies to help support remedial activities for literacy and math. And that's kind of what we always use that for. Just thought you'd need to know what, when you actually, since that's had an impact on our budget discussions tonight. That concludes program.
Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to policy.
Under policy, we had quite a vigorous discussion last week. I always enjoy the policy committee meetings. You might say that says something about me, but I just tend to enjoy that. So I have a number of comments, and I know Mr. Kurtz will have some comments, but I just want to give you kind of an overview of where we are. The policies are all at your, in your packet, so I don't want to read verbatim. But under revised policy 004, this has been one that's been debated, I should say, a little bit. And Mr. Subers has finally weighed in on it, and we believe the committee is satisfied with the wording. I'll, you can look at that wording change there. The desire of the committee was to put a little bit more clarity in the process as to how a removal may take place. We're hoping.
All these were vetted by our.
They are in Mr. Subers' possession, yes.
Oh, now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they're first readings.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, they have all, yes, I forgot to read on my notes here. These are currently under review by the solicitor.
And let's, I mean, we could also, and it was a big deal of concern because of, well, we'll go to past history, but, you know, when somebody doesn't show up to a meeting, all of a sudden, it's, oh, wait one more to, you know, we get through. It's very specifically in this board, in this policy, as well as the previous policy, and most policies of the region around the, around the county and state, that a board member has to refuse or neglect, I mean, if you're sick, you're on vacation, you're traveling for a job, Mr. Kurtz's case, going to school, this isn't neglect, this is.
Circumstance.
This is all that you're doing.
Circumstance.
Not neglecting your job and refusing to show up. So, you know, the wording is there, it's very specific, but in the past, with a board member before my tenure, like Mr. McCullough, who just wouldn't come. He got elected and just didn't want to come. And there is a way of removing somebody from that position, not because, you know, you're sick, or some of us have traveled periodically, or, you know, you're, or other reasons that are viable excuses.
I think what we wanted to add to this, though, was a process then that would be followed, because in the, in the prior policy, there was no process. It was just, okay, you know, five board members vote, and then there was no process to follow.
Can you make it a super majority, or is Mr. Subers saying not to do that?
He didn't really weigh in on that.
The other reason I'm saying is it prevents.
Yeah, I think, from what I understand with the school code, and correct me if I'm wrong, it does lay out parameters, it only requires a majority vote, but from what I understand, a school board could elect to make those more strict. So I guess you could do a super majority.
Because you don't have to, the school board, we read a paper just the other day, taxpayers went and asked, the court account, they asked to remove, was it North School Co. County? North School Co.
I can't remember where.
It was in School Co. County, to remove eight board members or something. And they, and they agreed because of negligence of their duties.
Eight?
It was because.
Sounds like a coup.
Because they did not pass.
No, they would, they would not hire a permanent superintendent.
They hired an assistant superintendent.
Twice.
Twice. And the board was dismissed for that. So it's like a problem.
Well, that's a violation of school code. You're supposed to, under code, have a superintendent.
Well, that's why they, there was a taxpayers petition.
Not looking for job security, but that's the truth.
I'd like to just allude to some of the changes in the new policy that we're bringing forward here with the revised policy. We did, Mr. Subers did forward the committee language as to how to remove a board member. It is still not, I envision a process, it would be laid out, this is what you must do first, this is the second step. That's not what it is. And I, my opinion was we'd bring it to the full board for discussion, because the Policy Review Committee has looked at it for a long time now, and I think it was good to get some new first opinions. But it has been clarified a little bit.
Well, I would also say, remember, Mr. Subers will be here on the 27th, so he can fill the board in with, you know, any extra questions or clarifications that the board needs. Given that it's only a first reading.
Okay.
Okay.
What, the rest of them?
The next one, if you recall, this was a reminder from Mr. Subers, I had accidentally overlooked this one, but this was the language edited to clarify the definition of citizen. And it now clearly says residence, resident and/or taxpayer speaking before the board. If you remember, we had two incidents, one of them unfortunately became an unfortunate incident, but we now have clarification on that issue, and that is already, that's Mr. Subers' strict advice and his wording.
This is resident of the school district, not a Douglasville mail address.
There is a difference.
There is a difference.
Yeah, you're either resident of the district or you're not.
Right.
Because you could have a Douglasville mail address and not decide.
Correct. Tim, will you give them a vote?
And again, you can ask Mr. Subers for clarification, and I'm assuming that what you're saying is resident or taxpayer of the district.
Correct. This is in policy six, right?
Policy, page three of nine, policy 006, section seven, hearing of citizens has been changed. That has been stricken, it is now called public participation. And again, for any members in the public, these policies are always available for your review.
Can I, can I make a request? Can we make these highlighted again, not only in italic, but highlight the changes? I'm getting a little old, I'm getting a little hard to call the changes.
Stop skipping through and looking just for the italic.
Yeah, is there any way, again, this is just highlight yellow, I don't care what color, but.
Yeah, I know when we get our copies, sometimes they're in red, which is convenient, but I think the problem is that the standard did again, and the standard doesn't.
It doesn't have to be red, it could be yellow, it could be anything.
Well, if you can't, well, again, if you scan them, they can't be color scanned, but maybe you put it in bold and italic, so it really sticks.
Do you need to stand them, or can you just put them, upload them? Instead of printing and scanning?
Before, we didn't want to have Word documents out there that could be changed, so we had to scan them.
Well, we'll come up with the technology solution.
Okay, this is just another big deal.
We'll work with Mr. Hawes, and we'll figure something out.
It's not an hour discussion.
All right, moving on. First reading acknowledgement of policy 112, very minor edit there. That's per, per school code on, on homebound. Remember, a lot of these, and again, for the benefit of the public, many of these policies are just undergoing their normal review. To be quite honest with you, it was my opinion that we had left our policies go for too long when we had some policies that dated back to 1987. I don't think it's a good place for a school district to be when you still have policies in your book from 1987. So that was, that's why we're in the midst of all this anyway. So some of the changes you're going to see are really actually very minor. So in item D, E, and F, all three of those, we did have some discussion about class size, but I don't, I don't think anything in the policy is. What I'd like to do is we do go through these, because there's all the way to the 900 series, so we develop a format here. If there's not really going to be many major changes, I'm not really going to spend a lot of time reviewing them, or we'll, we'll be here forever too, talking about them. So I'm going to rely on you to ask me questions that you might have about these, once you have reviewed them. I can tell you, they will be reviewed thoroughly by the committee, they will be reviewed thoroughly by the solicitor, they will be reviewed thoroughly by me as well, and also, part of Mr. McComill's new responsibilities is to oversee this whole thing. So those three policies under first reading, those are revisions. And again, for the benefit of the public, you'll either see revised policy, that means it already exists, new obviously speaks for itself. So under the first reading and acknowledgement of new policy 829, staff-student communication, again, without reading it, this is a new policy that addresses restrictions. We would like to see in place for how staff interacts with students on social and electronic media. I don't need to go into a long dissertation about many of the problems that adults and young people seem to be getting into as a result of some inappropriate communications. So we believe we need to get a better handle on this, and we believe this policy is the vehicle to do that.
Just, I want to be clarified, looking at number four, no emailing of personal email, you're talking about a, an employee using their personal email to email a student. Any contact with a student via emails you've done via the Daniel Boone email system?
Okay, so again, so in other words, a coach can email their team through their Daniel Boone email account, or a band director. I know band does that a lot. So band director can email through their Boone account, they can't through their personal accounts?
That's correct.
That's fine. Can we maybe put in there, can we, I'm sorry, can we put in there with their personal email, but, I don't know, ad wording, Boone accounts are allowable?
I think that would be good.
Something like that today? Okay, I'm, again, I'm just being clear.
We can go back, again, it's a first reading, it's, we have plenty of time.
They can use their Boone email account, again, something.
I, I think that would be good and helpful, because it is a debate, how.
And I know some, again, I know the former band director did that a lot, so.
Well, one of the concerns of, one of the winter sports coaches was, he would text his students, because they would all have their phones on at school anyway, because they need to know that their event was being canceled. And to get on their.
Well, again, that was, that was the third one, I was going to, social media, we're going to hit texting right now. That's a concern, because you're right, wrestling, like a band, they all use the phones, they, text blast, you know, get here a half hour earlier, wrestling's been canceled because of weather.
Especially winter winter.
You can't say one is okay and one isn't.
Yeah, I think my concern with the texting was, you're giving students' personal phone numbers out to faculty members, right? And volunteers or whoever, and, I mean, we define volunteers as faculty now. So my concern is you've got, maybe even unbeknownst to parents, you know, some employee of the school district now has a child's, you know, personal phone number. And so that raised alarm bells with me. I mean, when I went to school, we didn't have cell phones, but somehow we managed to communicate when something was canceled or, or changed and stuff like that. So I gotta believe there's another way to facilitate this, as opposed to allowing people to text.
And I agree with you, but, but again, I'm thoroughly in support of what you just said. But in this day and age, you know, if you have a wrestling or basketball game early Saturday morning, and it's still coming down, or indoor color guard, you know, they text one person, maybe either one of the captains, and the captain does it all. So the problem is, how do they do that? Do they contact the house? And that to me.
Would you do the landline phone?
I was gonna say, a lot of people are getting rid of landline phones. I'm not, I'm.
Again, I mean, there's a lot of.
I'm not screaming.
You can, you can do email blasts to a Boone account, you can give students Boone accounts, you know.
Well, we already said it was okay to use your Boone account to a student's account.
Yeah, well, you're, it's, that's your Boone account to a student's personal account. I'm wondering whether we shouldn't even have a personal, you shouldn't be emailing some student at his Gmail or Yahoo account, you ought to be emailing him to a Boone account.
At the end of the day, our concern is the inability to monitor some communication. And that is where these problems begin, and the inability to monitor an outside source of communication. So we will work logistically to try, I understand the convenience issue, believe me, after the bookbag thing last year, I understand people don't like to be inconvenienced. But I, as superintendent, am not going to put children in danger with people who should not be communicating with them, or there's something going on that we can't monitor. I just, I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't think anyone's disagree with that.
I don't, I agree, I'm just, we're bringing up additional concerns that you're going to hear from parents.
Correct.
The public.
Correct.
Social media's a big deal. How are you going, what, what is the board, what is the administration going to do when you find out that the violation of this policy is occurring? Teacher is, social networking happens, or teachers are texting, or teachers are emailing, I mean.
I think then it goes under just the normal progressive discipline procedures, and then based on the severity of what may be happening, then it'll, it'll be ratcheted up accordingly. But it would be, it's a violation of the school policy. It would be the same as if you didn't turn your lesson plans in on time, although something like that is more serious, but I mean, it falls into the same thing. It's a violation of school board policy, that's an issue.
So I have a question, so all teachers that have students on their Facebook as friends, are going to have to get rid of them at what time? Once is the policy approved? Because I know for a fact right now, there are teachers that have Facebook accounts and students are, students are friends. I'll be naive, I have never been on Facebook.
I don't see any, I don't see any reason why that should be, I think that's poor judgment.
I, I'm not, that I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just showing you, I'm just showing you the facts are, that, that is the fact. I'm gonna tell you, I agree, I, I agree with you, it should not happen, but they do.
What do I, a directive was put out earlier telling teachers this is unacceptable, they can't do this. That already happened in the past, but that doesn't mean they are a policy.
Yes. It was pretty much a practice that we would like people to adhere to because of, I can only tell you that, and not to prolong this conversation, one of the things that I try to do every year is get to the Save Schools Conference in Harrisburg, and I went to a presentation about social media and some of the things that go on. I walked out of there with my jaw dragging, responsible adults and some of the things that are going on with children. And I'm certainly not accusing anyone in Daniel Boone of having done any of that, but the potential is there, and I think if we don't address that potential, we're not doing our students a service.
Look, you know, there's, there's no reason why students' personal information, whether it's a cellphone number, it's an email account, needs to be used at all. There's no reason why there should be person, side Facebook pages. I mean, if you want to, we have a Daniel Boone Facebook page, you want to push information out.
That is correct.
People can like the Daniel Boone Facebook page, and you can use that to push information out to whoever likes the page about announcements that are going on. out to whoever likes the page about announcements that are going on. You can post announcements on our website and people can get the information from the website. You can give every single student, every single faculty member a D Boone account, email account and communicate back and forth through those accounts.
Couldn't that coach also have, like the circumstances, the examples you guys gave with wrestling or whatever, couldn't that coach have a distribution list of those students on Connect Ed?
Without trying to-
And then have somebody just connect Ed those students?
I was just about to ask, is there any way-
It's canceled today for weather.
I was just about to say, is there any way we can set up multiple accounts of like teams in Connect Ed and then the pairs can give-
What I, hearing all of these obvious, what I would call like little snags so far, we can go back and look at the implications of this. It's a first reading and try to answer those questions and figure out and tighten it up as much as we can. I just can't promise anybody that it's gonna be, it's gonna make everybody happy.
Yeah, it might not be popular with coaches and students. Probably won't be, but when it comes to safety, that needs to be our number one priority.
But, but is there a way, each coach has a Connect Ed list, then, then you know exactly what they're gonna send out? And you also get that Connect Ed.
We will work on technology solutions, but ones that we can monitor.
Yeah, by the way, it's gotta be something that disrupts the trouble.
Right. We need to know that at any point, we can go look at that communication and, and monitor. Not that we wanna spy on it, but if a problem develops, we wanna know that we can recover whatever the problem is. Because without that, we're, we're going to be, I, I think, leaving the potential at least for some students to be in unsafe circumstances.
I think, I think we all agree that can be accomplished, that'd be the perfect work that I would look.
Well, that, to summarize, is the intent of this policy. Mrs. Traynor, I know you worked on me with this. Do you wanna comment about, we do know two school districts that have implemented this. We didn't really get the chance to talk if you had any feedback from them at this point with how implementation of it has gone.
I'm aware of Fleetwood, who seems to be the pioneer, I think, who did this a year and a half ago and Exeter also has it. It's not to say others don't, which are familiar with it. And both of them had very similar concerns and out of the concern for saving their students, they wanted to go actively put these types of things into place. As far as I know, talking to both of them, they never had a violation from staff member was to put out there because it was communicated, it was pretty much as important as any of the policy that we passed and the consequences to be followed. And so at least as far as, less than my job comes to do. But again, it was just the more convenient social media has become and the more everybody friends with each other, it just opened itself up for greater superiority of our students.
You may want to just also check other counties out too. I mean, I would imagine that some of the wealthier districts who, like was it Lower Marion or Radnor that handed out the computers and they were, you know, basically turning on the cameras. Do you remember that incident?
That was a fiasco.
Um, I'm sure they grappled with this issue at some point in time, probably before us. And so they may have something a little bit more sophisticated in terms of a solution that they've already thought of.
Well, we'll see what Mr. Subers' take on the policy is. I'll go back to, I would imagine the, I see Mrs., Mrs. Goss is here. It probably is gonna impact a lot of what she does with coaches because that seems to be where a lot of the, the running around, for lack of a better word, seems to occur. So we'll go back, try to iron out the glitches the best we can and kind of, it feels like the same thing I said with the backpacks. I'm not gonna compromise safety for convenience. So this is the, the same, same church, different pew kind of discussion, so.
Mr. Wolf brought up a point earlier about how coaches were texting their, their students to alert them of a game being canceled or postponed. At the end of the day, in the high school, I know they do issue announcements that business has been texted, been canceled, students please take the bus. Coaches really shouldn't be, nobody should be texting during the school day period.
Well, I, I think in the, in the event that there's an emergency, I don't think anyone's gonna write someone up for, you know, saving someone, you know, a ride home. I mean, there, there's gonna be always those minute, you know, exceptions, but you gotta get away from the general practice and then you don't wanna get into this long list of exceptions or it just defeats the whole purpose of the policy.
I don't know if I would accept that either. I think Mr. Wolf was alluding to Saturday mornings, basketball, wrestling or winter throws into a color guard. Those are the issues. The ones, right, school.
The volleyball, the basketball, wrestling.
Yeah, I think the ones normally, sure, during school.
Well, again, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, since we as the district and the administration are recommending the imposition of this program, we would certainly try to help everybody make communications as, as effective as possible.
And Mr. Basil, I live in upstate New York when I wrestle, I'll tell you what, I mean, you get three and a half foot of snow in four hours period of time and we all found out when something was canceled. So if where there's a will, there's a way, they'll find out. It's just easier to text, it's easier to call or whatever. We'll have to revert back to the technologies, the safety issue that needs to be supported.
Lord, lord forbid anyone to talk one on.
Yeah, forget ya.
If they can email, if they can text blast, they can connect Ed, same thing.
Or get to the parents.
And it creates a safety, a safety network for children.
Correct, yeah, perfect.
Mr. Hawes, we'll be talking.
I would argue that point.
We'll come up with a solution.
And I was thinking the administration should be proactive with this policy.
It's just a personal thing for me. I, I just see too much of this when you go to these conferences.
Not in zero tolerance, I mean, if there is, your foreword, dump your Facebook accounts, stop emailing students.
Well, they're actually, that going hand in hand with any kind of communication policy is also a policy that the federal government has made us impose called our AUP, our Acceptable Use Policy. So there are actually penalty phases explained in that Acceptable Use Policy because this could potentially, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hawes, these situations could also be violations of the Acceptable Use Policy. So we actually have a double, double guidance here.
What, what about the coaches that have given email addresses out of volunteers and they're communicating with your kids also? Does this fall under?
Volunteers considered employees.
We define volunteers in our policy as under staff.
Is this employee? All, everybody who is, it works for is a volunteer, a district, a volunteer coach or a paid employee by the district is not a employee.
Right, I would never define that. But what's gonna happen with this policy in place? Does that mean the coaches can no longer give out personal information to volunteer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just stop all that?
Yeah.
They shouldn't be giving it out now, so.
Well, they currently do.
Yeah, I know, so, you know, I would imagine-
It's loosely regulated right now.
I think at the end of the day, there would be some sort of directive saying expunge all personal information from your accounts and start using this methodology for communicating with students going forward.
I think it'll be part of the coaches' responsibility to quote in-service their team and tell them, this is how we communicate.
There's something very important I need to add. In the policy, we parted up at the policy committee meeting, we defined staff member as volunteers. We did not define employee as to include volunteers. So we need to make sure our policy-
I think we did that correction in here. Did we do that in here?
Is that employee user to say staff member?
Yes, we defined the words.
Yeah, we added a definition. Since the policy committee, we added a definition for that.
Oh, very good, thank you. Just to be clear.
All right, well, let us work, go back to the drawing board, not drawing board, but we'll again, try to work with everybody and make it as user-friendly as possible. Under H, moving on, H, I, and J are all regulations needed to fully implement a policy that you passed a couple of months ago on records management. I know with Mr. Basil, this has been one of his longstanding initiatives as well as ours. These are rather lengthy policies or guidelines, but they are very technical and they're based on a lot of the right to know. I'm having Mr. Subers review them, but I think probably the most important one is item J, or excuse me, I. We've been looking for a long time. We've probably been, I don't want to say negligence is a little bit strong of a word, but we've probably been not doing what we should have been doing by not having a records retention policy in place. So this will do that. I can tell you that's, it's, it's pretty much boilerplate language from the right to know law, but it does address everything that we need to address. I would draw your attention to the very last line, and I gave this to the committee and I'm sure everyone was prepared for the detail, but prior to passing this need to have a records retention law for just budgets and things like that, there has been on the books a records retention law for student records. So if you look at the very last, page six of eight, it says student records referred student records plan. We already have that. It's a 45-page long document that involves HIPAA, FERPA, and many of the things. We are truly a regulating industry in, in schools and records, if you trace the FERPA laws passed back in the 1970s called Buckley Amendments, there was a big bruja over the FBI getting access to records, et cetera. So student records management is also a very serious issue that we have to deal with as well. That's already, we already have a policy. You go to our policies on student records retention and all that, it's already there. I'm sure.
I think, I think the, I appreciate you guys getting this done. I think the second, once it's, it's vetted and passed, obviously that's, that's step one. Step two then is the execution portion of that, which is to-
It will be, yeah, it'll be a bear.
Organizing and then either digitizing and storing and/or destroying documents because that was really the basis of this whole thing. We had, you know, at one point run out of room for storage and we were looking at leasing additional space at additional cost and, you know, that's what sort of brought this whole discussion up is what are we doing with our records? Shouldn't we be destroying these things to create more room and so on and so forth?
Well, the next policy that we will actually be bringing to you is going to be a records destruction schedule. That has to be part of this. That's not here yet. I do want to draw the board's attention to the one-page document, administrative guideline 800.2 called litigation hold. Anytime the district enters into any kind of litigious situation, the, the law states that we have to put a litigation hold on the deletion or destruction of many records that may be part and parcel to an investigation of that incident. Special Ed comes to mind a lot when somebody might wanna see somebody's records regarding a certain situation. And it could be bids, could be, could be anything that's listed on that. If you look at that records retention schedule, you'll get a full appreciation for what school districts have to do in terms of dealing with amount of records that we have to keep. That completes the policy section. So you can see, that's what our meetings are like, that we can go on and on all night. We kinda usually, to use Mr. Shaheen's language, a two-hour hard stop and we're done.
Any questions or comments from board members on policies and, okay. I just wanted to, while we're sort of here, I mentioned this last year and at one of the previous policy committee meetings, I know it was sort of discussed implementing a heat policy for being out on the turf field.
Yes, we did. In, in addition to, and I don't know, Mr. Connor, if you wanna chime in, we did also have some discussion items. We've been notified from the Department of Ed that we have to have in place, one, a policy on cardiac arrest, which Mrs. Traynor and I will be bringing that forward for future discussion at the policy committee. We also have to have a policy on, I think, Mr. Wolf, you were involved in some conversations on concussion management. We have found some policies on that. We will be implementing that. And we are also beginning to research some way of, Mrs. Goss, do you wanna, do you have any feedback on what we do now if it gets too hot on the field? You wanna, why don't you come on down here and explain for us?
Basically, our trainer, Mr. Marshall monitors, we have a little dad, he jacks him every day, calling him all week throughout the day. He's always on the turf, in and out, coming right back and forth. So, I mean, it is monitored.
Is there a recommended guideline from a national organization that says they shouldn't be on the field at a given point?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can ask.
What, what benchmark does he use now? I mean, at what point does he say it's too hot? Is there a certain temperature that he's looking at and saying, well, look, it's 100 degrees, we gotta take him off the field, or is it 114?
But there is a certain temperature.
We'll have to research that. I mean, we, we will monitor that very closely as well.
I mean, I just know you got football camp starting, what, today, right?
Correct.
And this summer, we've had several days over 100 degrees, so obviously that's, that's a concern and we wanna make sure the students aren't at risk.
Mr. Hawes, I'd like to ask, Mr. Marshall, if he measures the temperature on the turf, does he also measure the temperature on the macadam during the band practice?
Uh, I don't necessarily.
Because I think that should be checked out too. Especially, I mean, if the previous students were not able to get water at certain points and the temperature of the macadam is very, very high.
Could be even hotter because it's black and-
Yeah.
No, I think it's a good point and we certainly administratively will take a closer look at that.
And within this heat policy, is there a guideline?
I've never actually seen a heat policy. There probably are guidelines out there. We could commit to a policy.
There was actually, in one of the PASBA things that we receive as a board, there was a discussion about heat policies that were out there and I know universities have them, so I'm sure we can adopt.
Absolutely.
We can look at other school districts that have turf.
Sure.
Spain and Hempfield, a few of the others have exclusively turf fields. I mean, some recreate the wheel, it's not even what they've got. They haven't even been vetted, so let's look at those. In terms of giving the students access to water on hot days, is there further recommendations that every 15 minutes there should be a water break, every 20 minutes as needed? My common sense is say a kid needs to drink, he should be able to drink.
I don't think we should.
I agree, I just wondered if that should be included in the heat policy, ensuring that students are high graded on hot days as well.
Yeah, we can put something together that has guidelines for good practices. I think most of our coaches are, are pretty good with that, but we can certainly put something in writing.
I think what brings us more to a head now is they've been practicing on the cat for years and I, I think they've used sensibility on what to do. But I, but they have to be conscious of the fact that that turf gets much, much hotter than typical grass water.
Absolutely.
So that's where, that's why the issue's coming to a head.
Absolutely. And ours is down and that, it gets a little hot down there in the, what used to be a stream bed down there at the high school.
Okay, any other comments? All right, any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, moving on.
Another report on transportation, our bus routes, just as this is the time of year when they are, are being set. You may have received a correspondence regarding a, a change in a bus route. I have actually taken care of that. We can, we can talk later. Parent requested a, we found that we were able to accommodate a request that they had made.
Oh, from earlier?
Yes, yes, that's been handled. So nothing under transportation.
Okay. Old business, we'll be discussing Channel One.
Well, let me go through these. The retention schedule, as you see, is, has pretty much, I think we can, obviously with your permission, we can take that off of this list. Softball coach, those interviews have been held, the paperwork is in the process. We do have a new candidate to bring forward and once we process that paperwork, we'll have them ready for the August 27th agenda since that doesn't start till the spring anyway. And the Title IX study status is still pending. Mr. Subers has made correspondence and we're still on hold with that, so we can leave that on here pending further information.
Okay. And obviously, right, okay, so we're all-
So that's under old business.
Okay, any questions from board members on old business? Okay, seeing none. Any new business from board members?
I would like to bring, on the agenda for this evening's voting meeting, there is an item determining how we, our agreement with Channel One. This time, I would provide a little bit of updated information and allow the board to read for Mr. Hank or our new vice principal. I met Mr. Hank in discussions and Dr. Otto, but recently, Channel One, controversial before a decade really, but it hasn't been the news lately up until I was where the link on August 11th, I believe it was two days ago, an article published by Fox News. And I alluded to a lot of what was controversial, which Channel One did at the last meeting, but I wanted to read a paragraph here of the news article, which is astonishing. The channel actively promotes its own website, which the group says, and the group I'm referring to is the campaign for the road to Great Shiloh. By the way, there goes, Channel One are currently in the process of bringing up superintendent support to state taxes to take care of Channel One in their schools, but we'll go back and read it. The channel actively promotes its own website, which the group says has advertised a site for $7.49 a minute and promoted another site called girl.com, which includes articles such as Reader Hookup Confession, My Boyfriend's Mom Caught Me Giving Him Oral Sex, and Tender School Forces You to Take a Prejudice Test. This is on, this is a link, this is, its website is advertised on Channel One's website, which is here for 20 years, which is ten. So I believe the time has long passed for us to consider Channel One and I hope the board will consider it tonight. I'd like to welcome Mr. Hank to vote to get his thoughts.
I mean, we're, we're gonna bring this up on the voting meetings, so why don't you vote Mr. Hank at the voting meeting and discuss it there and then vote right after versus-
Which will be back to some-
It's your call.
Because then we do that under the discussion area.
We're gonna have, you have plenty of opportunity to discuss it before we vote on it too, so.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Do we, do we have an idea of what equipment that they can take back? They can take their TV sets out of the room that we don't use for anything but Channel One right now. From 20 years ago.
Correct. Mr. Subers.
Do we have any TVs that they gave us from 20 years ago?
In high school, the TVs were at that old, yes. There have been cases where Channel One decided what's important to come back and give us.
Yeah, they will, those trash, they will.
There is a device however they can remove, which I believe is an RF modulator, it's called, or the giant box in one of the, in the audiovisual room and that allows the school to transmit its own broadcast to those televisions. Says there is a device you can pick up that radio jack, which is the same thing for $30 and allowing you to broadcast that information out. But in the equipment they can remove, they probably won't, and it's not used very much[1714.44] it's not used regularly by Channel One.
Yes.
So, we'll discuss.
Hi, Mr. Subers has given a pretty clear direction in his directive on this issue. He doesn't really have any major concerns, other than, once we vote, make sure we communicate affirmatively with them that we've done this, and let it go from there.
Okay, any?
I've spoken to several, I mean, again, since, I know this is one of Mr. Kurt's burning issues, I've spoken to several parents as well, to my own children, and I get the, oh, they still have Channel One, I mean, they don't listen to it, it may not even turn out in some rooms, I mean, it's, I, I think it's a non-issue, I don't think that it's even, even come up too much of a fight, but they'll be voting on it anyway, so.
Okay, any other new business? Okay, presentation by public on any issue?
Rich Martin, as co-chair of the J, I'm sure you're all, you're the vice position for the year.
Thank you.
But in seriousness, I have a serious question, we've all spent too much time just to help out the first team, along with what it's gonna be, when do you plan to start working on the next year's company?
We actually sort of started in July, and we've asked the administration to get back to us by November 1st with a rough draft of the budget, in terms of expenses at least, at that, so that we can start looking at it at that point in time. So, it's looking at, we're gonna probably have another meeting at the end of this month, beginning of September, to kind of talk about multi-budget software, and then we'll probably schedule another one meeting in September, another one in October, so somewhere in the next two or three meetings of the Finance Committee, we hope to have that discussion on the table. Mm-hmm. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, great, meeting adjourned, we'll move right into a special voting meeting.
Again, for the members of the public, that voting meeting agenda is also available for your review.
Mr. Kurt, here.
Here.
Mr. Kurt's here. Mr. McCullough, here. Mr. McLaughlin, here. Mr. Potts, here. Mr. Shaheen, here. Mr. Wolf, here. And Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, any agenda edits?
They've already been read into the minutes.
Okay. Procedures for public participation are in the inside jacket of the blue cover. Having said that, any public comment on agenda items in the special voting area?
Quick question, they were written to the, the minutes for the previous, the whole meeting, they need to be read to the minutes, we opened a new meeting. Okay, thank you.
The changes reflected in this?
Correct.
They're reflected in this, your voting all, which is in front of you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, no, the editor are also applied to the.
Whoever makes the motion, say, what's her one, does she?
We gotta wait, we gotta wait for the public participation, which is, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments from the public on the voting meeting agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I can quickly.
No, wait, I'll, I'll make a motion for seven A through D with the edits from the previous.
That you can do.
All right, there we go.
With the edit, excuse me, with the edits from the committee at all.
From the committee at all, yes.
That you can do. I'm sorry, how far are you going?
Seven A through D.
Eight through what?
D.
All of seven.
All of seven.
Thank you.
Which, uh?
As amended.
Let's hope. Yeah, Mr. Kurt, second.
Okay, we have a first, and we have a second. Okay, any comments? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Seminero. Yes. Mr. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin, yes. Mr. Potts, yes. Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Like to thank the board for the support of the administrative organization plan that we brought forward. Frankly, I'm very excited about moving forward with the new team, and we're hoping to do good things with the new organization, so thank you very much.
I'd like to congratulate our new administrators and our new teachers for being called back.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, can we move on to the second item on the agenda here?
I would move, I would move to the A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would just like to extend the opportunity to ask you a question. If you would like to.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna change anybody's.
I don't think it will, but I, I.
Is there anyone, is there anyone here on the board that finds merit in keeping?
Yeah, that's, I mean.
I don't think it's the head they call, but I think.
I don't think it's made of our minds, Mr. Kurtz.
All right, seeing no additional information is required.
Can we get some wires, right?
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
And Mr. Seminero.
And, and.
And Mr. Basil.
This is effective immediately, correct?
Yes.
Actually, the process that you read, Mr. Subers' memo, requires your vote, I am notifying him of that, him publishing a letter to the current corporate owner of Channel One to notify them of our intention.
According to Mr. Subers' letter is that if, if, if we were to stop displaying Channel